Here.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Here.
Commissioner Brady?
Here.
Commissioner Hancock?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
We have some minutes from our last meeting on August 15th. Did anybody see any changes that were needed to those minutes? Okay, would somebody like to move to approve those?
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
All right. I will say, the book we're passing back and forth is some swatches there are also in the packet for one of the matters at hand. That's what's going back and forth up here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
All right, great. So now's the time when the public is invited to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, limit your comments to items not already on the agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Not seeing any, I'll close public comment and we'll move straight into matters at hand. The first one is an approval of expanded construction hours and preliminary and final design review for an exterior materials change. And this is for the Village Walk project at 690 East Catati Avenue. We'll start with staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this first item is a very straightforward one. As most of all of you know very well, this project has gone through multiple approval processes in its history and is now under construction and going gangbusters out there. And the current owner of the project, owner and builder of the project, has requested a change in exterior building materials. And that's the bulk of what's in front of you tonight. In addition to that, so that would be, excuse me, preliminary and final design review approval of that materials change. And the other request is an expansion of construction hours to cover work on Saturdays between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00 p.m. And those hours are approvable under the land use code with the appropriate review authority approval, so it can be adopted by resolution tonight. And then the other change is a request for a change in the mailbox design that is included in the packet, the prior and proposed. So just briefly, the 2011 design review approval, which in and of itself was a reevaluation of a prior approval, the 2011 approval that was granted to the project had a number of design changes to it, exterior materials as well as landscape changes. And those were approved, recommended for approval by design review and the planning commission, and the city council adopted those changes. One of those was a substitution of stucco for an all siding format. And the stucco was primarily on the lower elevations of some of the facades, so it was applied in an interesting way. It wasn't the full building coverage, but it was applied to features of most elevations and most all of the lower, first floor of the multi-story buildings. And the current applicant believes that stucco, and staff concurs that the siding materials would be an upgrade to the project, and so staff is recommending approval. The siding would be both horizontal and vertical depending on the elevations, and those are detailed in your packets and the plan sets and they're in your packets. Excuse me. There are no proposed colors to, or, excuse me, changes to the color that would be applied. The paint schemes would all remain the same on all the buildings, and we've provided streetscape depictions of what those colors are, just so you could see those, as well as the swatches, as the chair pointed out. The change in mailbox design, staff is not recommending approval of that change, and it's simply because the other site furnishings were developed, I believe, to match the aesthetics of the city's streetlights, which are, you know, turn of the century, sort of more ornate than what the applicant had proposed as a substitute. So on page 35 of your packet, the upper left-hand corner shows the approved design. You can see it has a fluted base and a finial on the top, and it's black. It's more typical of the other street furnishings in the development, including the lighted bollards and the, as I said, the streetlights. So staff was not recommending approval of the change in mailboxes. And the final item under consideration tonight is the, as I mentioned, the expansion of construction hours. Currently, construction on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays can be allowed by the review authority between these hours of 9:00 and 5:00. The applicant is requesting only to work on Saturdays, so it would still give Sunday relief to neighbors that were potentially bothered by the construction noise. So staff is also recommending commission approval of that expansion. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question. Hi there. Were the neighbors notified of our meeting tonight?
Yes, they were. We did our standard 500-foot noticing.
Okay. And then were they aware in there about like the Saturday construction for why we were meeting tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I had one to ask. In the streetscapes and in some of the comparisons of the 2011 approval and now, in addition to removing the stucco, there was some, it looks like some changes in the siding as well, like removal of what looks like cedar shake and replacing by some vertical board and bat or something like that. Just want to make sure we know everything. Like the center units on Lancaster Drive triples look like they've switched. Have to flip the page over.
I don't believe that is the case, Mr. Chair, but the applicant is here. We could ask him to clarify that. I believe it's all cement board siding of, like I said, varying in vertical or horizontal. But we could certainly ask the applicant.
All right, we'll do. Any more questions for staff? Okay, so we'll open this up for public comment. This is a chance for members of the public to comment on this item, including the applicant is welcome too, if he wishes. Public comment? And if the applicant is here, it would be great if that question about any other siding changes could be addressed.
Would you mind clarifying that, Keith?
Good evening, I'm Keith Christopherson with Synergy Group. The siding that's being proposed is all hardy board siding, which is a fiber cement. And with the exception of the trim, and the trim is a wood product, only because they haven't come out with a composite that's really satisfactory yet. One of the real drivers for us to change from the stucco to the siding is that we just really found over the years that it makes a much better product for the homeowner in the long haul. There's less maintenance, you don't get the staining or the calcium leach from the stucco, from the cement coming out through the inevitable cracks that you get in it. And on top of that, we just felt it was more in keeping with the site. And, you know, I think it would be more attractive in the long haul and the short run. So I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Well, I guess specifically, in comparing the 2011 approval and 2016, there are several places that appear to show a shingle look in the 2011 approval that show vertical board and bat look in the 2016. So is that change also part of this submission, I guess, is what I'm wondering?
It was just part of the mix. We, you know, we gave it to the architects and it's, when we purchased the property, it was, you know, it was all approved, you folks know that, and everything was done. So there was really little opportunity for us to take that and put our stamp on it. And, but the architects are very good architects, have done a lot of work for us over the years. And so we are satisfied with the design. And we just pandered it over to them and asked them to, ask them to come up with an attractive scheme that works for them with a contemporary, traditional, that's kind of an odd statement, but a new age, traditional elevation, and that's what they came up with.
Okay, thanks.
If I can make one comment or clarification. I did just a quick check of the 2011 approvals, which I think is your question, Mr. Chair, and it's all hardy plank shingling on that one as well. Probably the one that looks the most like cedar shake would be the triplex building, and that one is called out as hardy plank shingle siding. So I think it's more in the graphic depiction than the actual materials.
But it is attained in appearance from a shingle appearance to a board and bat?
I would probably have to dig deeper down to see if they were going to do some type of a special application to get this effect. One of the things that they are doing is they're going, they're using varying depths of siding on some of the facade pieces, on some of the vertical facade pieces. But I don't see anything that calls out a special application type for that.
Okay, thanks. Vice Chair O'Nines? Were you going to ask a question of the applicant?
I was going to ask. It looked, the problem with us, the problem with us, Keith, is that we have this on a piece of paper, so we're trying to do it, you know, like reading a cartoon. But really, all you're saying is just the one change of the one material.
It's all, it's all hardy plank. All of the materials, the siding materials are from Hardy, James Hardy, Hardy plank, and they're all fiber cement-type products.
Okay. I think the Commissioner's question was based on the fact we're just having a hard time seeing or an after on that, but it's just that one change that you're talking about.
Yeah, that's just, well, we got rid of the stucco and things have been moved around to match up, and color was tied into it at the same time. And so, and, you know, I have to say that we resist using wood siding at, I mean, almost vehemently, only because the, with the type of finishes we get today, the paints, there's just nothing to them. They have no substance. And, you know, the wood isn't protected. It may look protected, but it's not. And the failure rate is so high. And, you know, and we don't like, we don't like having callbacks. You know, we like, we want a buyer to move in, we want a homebuyer to move in and really appreciate their home and, you know, not come back down the road and feel that we had an inferior product, put an inferior product on their house. And really, that's what, that's really what wood is today. It's an inferior product because of the, it's the lack of protection we can give it.
I just want to go on record as saying that as far as reputation is concerned, Synergy Group and Christopherson, I think are A-plus, and we should be happy to have you take over this project, and we're going to do all we can to help.
Well, thank you very much. And to add on to that, it's been, it's been a very, very pleasurable experience working with staff and the city of Catati. It's rare that we had the opportunity to work with such a, such a small group of people where we can really get together and we can talk over issues and work out solutions. And it's, I mean, I've been doing this for 40 years, and this is, this is really, this is really the gold star for me. So you folks have really got a great operation here, and thank you for offering us the opportunity to work in your community.
Great, thanks. Anybody else wish to comment on this item? All right, I'm going to close public comment, and we're open for discussion.
I feel happy that the design review has worked through a lot of the design issues and that they've been flushed out. So I personally haven't really looked at any of the details. I feel I'm okay with the Saturday working, that nobody, nobody here is objecting to it. So I think it's, it's great to see the project moving along, and yeah, I haven't got any queries about it.
Anybody else?
I feel the same way. I do want to comment on the mailbox, and I like the original design that we have. I think it goes more with the style of what's out there, and so I would recommend that we go with our original, our staff recommendation on that. And I have a problem with Saturday. We would have had a problem, we would have been neighbors here, so. And I like the new siding. I agree with Mr. Christopherson, I think it's a better quality product, and I think it'll, especially since this is right on the corner of Lancaster and East Catati, that it'll really shine in our community. And just to comment on the, if you really like our planning commission, just pass the word and pass the word about our planning department, because it seems like Catati always gets a bad rap about that, and it's nice to hear that you had a very pleasant experience, and so I think we're all happy as Commissioners to hear that.
Hey, now?
Sure. I mean, I think I'm just happy to see progress. And I've only, I've heard from one neighbor, and it was all really positive feedback. I think they're just happy that your group took it on, and they were really happy to see progress there and looking forward to some new neighbors. So it was all good things that I heard. So I think, yeah, I'm really comfortable with Sa, I feel comfortable with Saturday. If not, I think I would have heard something different before getting to this meeting in order to have people out there. And, yeah, I think I agree with the mailbox. I think the original one is fine. I think that that's true to the character of our town, too. And that's it, I think it looks great.
Anything to add, Vice Chair O'Nines?
Nothing that I haven't said already. I think we ought to back our design review people in regards to the decision on the mailbox, but I'm in favor of everything going as proposed.
Yeah, and I would just say, I like by it twice and love seeing it go up. Twice every day, I mean. I see what's been added during the workday, so I love it. And I'm, I just want to clarify with staff, so the design review concurred with the staff recommendation to stick with the original mailbox?
They did, yes.
Okay. And I prefer that as well, but I'll defer to them on that. So I think I'm ready for a motion, if anybody wants to make one.
Sure. I can do it. Move to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Catati approving preliminary and final design review of an exterior building materials change and allowance for Saturday construction between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. for Village Walk, a 46-unit residential project located at 690 East Catati Avenue.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call?
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. We're going to do our best to put something together you all be proud of.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number two, British European Motors Vehicle Service, Major Repair and Auto and Vehicle Sale, 606 Portal Street. This would be a conditional use permit to allow vehicle service, major repair, and indoor auto and vehicle sales. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Item begins on page 39 of your packet, and as you said, we're considering a conditional use permit for vehicle services, major repair at 606 Portal Street. This business, British European Motors, has actually been in Catati since 1986, a longtime business here. And they want to relocate, just because the space serves their needs better, adds to 606. And, let's see, they basically, they specialize in classic British automobiles. If you go there, you'll find yourself drooling over cars that look quite nice. And mostly, they service these vehicles. Occasionally, they do offer some vehicles for sale. They have a little area inside their reception area where they can put two vehicles, and so they're displayed indoors, not outdoors with the banners and balloons that you can sometimes see with vehicle sales. We didn't have, when we looked at the area, there's really no major issues came up. Everything was fine with fire and ADA accessibility. Mark runs a really clean shop. If you go in there, it's really very clean. Didn't seem to be any issues. We do know that it's had the Coupa inspection, and everything seems up to snuff with that, so no hazardous material issues. We, they're not applying for it, and we want to make sure that we're restricting it so that if another use comes in, we take another look at it if vehicle services come in. But they're not applying for bodywork, and so we're not including that in this approval, nor do they wash vehicles. Any of these uses would require us to look at different elements such as ventilation or recycling of water and discharging of wastewater. So we're limiting to that. Also, there's no outdoor sales or outdoor storage of materials or product. I think with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but the applicant is here as well today.
Great, thanks. Are there any questions for staff? Okay, I will open public comment on this item, so members of the public are invited to step to the podium to speak on this item, and that includes the applicant. The applicant would like to step up and tell us about the project. No pressure, you don't have to.
Good evening, Mark Singleton for British European Motors. We'd also like to thank the Commission and the staff for working with us. It's the first time in 30 years, I think, that we have, so they made it really very easy, as our previous applicant said, and we were a little nervous about coming in and doing all this stuff, but once we came in and spoke with JP here, everything worked out really well, and we're very happy, very happy to stay here. We don't want to go anywhere. And we do limit all our vehicles. We're not really a typical sort of vehicle repair and sales facility. I invite you to come out and take a look. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you, and I appreciate your time.
It looks like Vice Chair O'Nines would like to ask you a question.
I was, when I read this, I was just a little surprised. Are we, are we sort of, if you're going to sell a car, you're going to polish it and wash it? Are we sort of winking at the fact that they're going to clean up, or you don't have any plans for bodywork? You have?
We have a separate facility that we use for all our vehicle washing, which is KC's Car Wash on the corner of Runaway Park Expressway. So most of our, most of our wash-type stuff is vehicle service. So somebody brings their car in for service, and then we'll wash it and vacuum it after. So we just run them across to the car wash, and they wash them there. Any of the other sort of repairs, as staff had said, we don't do any of the bodywork-type stuff. It's sort of assembly and things like that.
Okay, so this is, so this is no surprise to you, what I'm reading in here, that you haven't applied for auto body repair?
Correct.
Or vehicle washing and so forth?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted, yeah, didn't want you to get trapped in that.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, no, that's all good. Thank you, we appreciate that.
Great, thanks. Any other members of the public? All right, close public comment on that item, and we're open for discussion. How about we start at the other end this time, Commissioner Brady?
Sure. No, I think, yeah, it's great, they need a spot. We have one in town, and I'm glad he had a smooth process working with staff. Thank you, JP.
What you guys?
Deter. No, it's good to hear that it's all going smoothly and that, just, you know, a simple shuffle, shuffle around the block, I guess, and, you know, that's working, and it's, yeah, it's great, great that you're having it work there. Thanks.
Yeah, I feel the same way, so. Glad you're staying in town.
Yeah.
Anything to add? Okay, I likewise, I'm glad you're choosing to stay in Catati.
Yeah.
So I'm ready for a motion, if anybody would?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to a resolution of, approve the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Catati, approving a conditional use permit to allow vehicle service, major repair, indoor auto, and vehicle sales at 606 Portal Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call?
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you much. And we move on to business item three, which is a conditional use permit for a second-hand store at 8220 Old Ridwood Highway. This would be a resolution. That's the old Exchange Bank building. So we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this one is actually about bringing a new business into Catati, and it does require conditional use permit for a second-hand store in this district. First of all, let me apologize for the way this showed up on the agenda as CUP underscore second-hand store. I entered that in a, what I thought was a searchable field, and I just tried to put in things that we might search for in the future, not realizing it was going to pull the information and place it on the, on the agenda that way. So apologize for that, and certainly won't make that mistake again. But, so, this, as you know, is, as Chairman Ford said, is going to, is a new business that's proposed to go into the Exchange Bank, so we're happy to see somebody proposing to move into that space. As you know, it's been empty for a while now. This is a retail establishment. It's a little bit different in that most retail establishments are permitted by right in this district. They can pretty much just open their doors and move right in. Second-hand stores are considered conditional use, and I think the concern, I personally think it's a little bit of an older concern that used to exist with second-hand stores, and that concern that they can have a blighting effect on a neighborhood, especially if you have a density of second-hand stores, or if they're associated with other stores like check cashing and other things, where you need to look at the various uses next to one another. In this case, the applicants also have a second-hand store in Petaluma that's quite successful, and we don't see that potential at all here. So, let me look my notes real quick here. Couple of things about the conditions of approval that we're looking at, that it includes no outdoor display or storage. Their property line, or that front of that building is right on the right-of-way, and our code prohibits any kind of outdoor display in that right-of-way, so they wouldn't have that opportunity to do that, except for in the scope of a limited-term permit. If they were having an event, we could do something like that, but we can't allow it on a day-to-day basis. Would not include, and that also means there wouldn't be things like collection bins that could be placed outside in that area. I also would draw your attention to two additional conditions of approval that I'm requesting be added to the permit, and this is really to discourage and control things that are outside the applicant's hands, and that's somebody coming and just dumping, you know, dumping or dropping off stuff without them reviewing it and seeing whether or not they want to accept it, and/or causing a litter problem or nuisance problem on the sidewalk area. So that is to discourage the drop-off. We're asking that they post a little sign at their entryway saying that, you know, that they can only they can only take donations inside the store during their normal business hours, and also that if there are items that are left outside, that they remove those right away in the, in the morning. The only other issue that came up was really had to do with the building itself. The use category changed from banking office to mercantile, which triggered a requirement for the fire alarm system to be installed. And so the property owner and the applicant is aware of that, that needs to be installed prior to them moving any kind of merchandise into the store. They can certainly go in there and start prepping it and getting it ready, but before they can move product in, that has to be in place. And with that, available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well. And that's it, thank you.
Great, thanks. Any questions for staff? Chair O'Nance?
Is it, is it relevant, are these, is this a 501(c)(3) organization?
I think it's a for-profit business, and the applicant is here, can talk about that, but there is no indication that it was a 501(c)(3).
I have a question, that's the applicant.
Okay, yeah, when we get to public comment, we can ask questions of the applicant. Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, just a quick question. The difference in fire between what was a bank and now's a retail shop, I would have seen, anyway, can you just explain what that is?
No, but the Fire Marshal is here tonight, and he can explain it. I don't, not, I just know it belongs in a different use category, but in terms of the combustibility of various products, I'm definitely outside my...
So why don't we ask the Fire Marshal during public comment?
Okay.
That's all good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I just have something on the applicant.
Oh, okay. Anything more for staff? Okay, let's open up public comment. So members of the public who wish to speak on this item may come on up, and that includes the applicant, Fire Marshal, whichever of you'd like to come first.
Hi.
Hi.
So, our business is kind of like, I don't know if you've ever heard of Buffalo Exchange, stuff we throw in a little mix of really interesting pieces of furniture and kind of art and music, things like that, so that's kind of where we're at. And we thought Catati would be great, because it's a college town, and every college town pretty much has a Buffalo Exchange, so that's, we're like our own version of that, except we do give back to the community. In our store in Petaluma, we have a room that's entirely free for children. It's a free room. I'm not quite sure if we're going to do that here or not. We'd like to, but it's a much smaller space, so we'll see if we can do that.
Great.
I'm sorry, my hearing's not as good as you...
Oh. Sorry, I'm a little...
What kind of exchange do you mean? I didn't...
Have you heard of Buffalo Exchange?
Buffalo Exchange?
Yeah. In college towns...
I've seen turkeys.
Pacific Beach, it's like, kind of second-hand, upscale, a little bit edgy, vintage clothing, kind of.
So people will drop off, or bring clothing into trade to get credit, so they might bring a bag of clothes, and then they walk out with three or four items, or four or five items. So it's kind of stuff they're not using, to, kind of a recycling thing. And also, to address, which is always a concern, is if people would be leaving, we're going to be not asking for donations in any kind, and we will be very adamant about posting something, so the public will know not to leave stuff. We, with our second store, we have an abundance of merchandise, so we're able to stock the store pretty thoroughly with all the merchandise that we currently have.
So, when I think thrift store, you, really, you're, you're in a different set. You don't, you don't receive donations and...
Right, I mean, on occasion, you know, someone might say, you know, thank you so much, you've done a great thing in the kids' room, and we don't take any money for that, that's our rule. And they might say, you know, we want to give you a piece of furniture, you know, something in exchange, and, you know, usually we don't accept it, you know, but on occasion, you know, we see, we may...
In our Petaluma store?
Yeah.
It's going to be similar to that store, but operated definitely different because of the scope and this...
The size.
The size as well.
Not, not nearly as big.
It's a little different than Petaluma. The downtown of Petaluma, a lot of people put stuff out on the sidewalks. We don't plan on doing that here. We're just, think it's added a nice touch to the downtown to have a different kind of retail. We'll focus a lot on records and things like belt buckles and just different collectible type things more than, than your average thrift store. And we call it a thrift store just because it involves the second-hand nature, but it's not your typical thrift store. And if you ever have a chance to visit our one in Petaluma, you'll, you'll see that that's the, you know, the nature of what we're trying to do. No worries.
I had a question.
Commissioner?
Thank you. So my daughters go to Plato's Closet a lot. I have two college teenage daughters, and so I just was curious, you said you do, like, get credit, because they used to go, they thrift a lot. So is that something that you're going to do in this store, or?
Uh, yeah, that, that's our plan, is to definitely do like a credit system as well.
And there was one other thing I was just going to say, is Thomas Page School is the only school in Catati, and they actually, when, I don't know if they still do it, but it might be, they do a big clothing exchange there for children.
Oh, wow.
And they do free, and everything's free.
Nice.
So they do, they used to do it a couple times a year, and it was just a great thing for the community, and anybody could go in and get things. So I don't know if you have the room here, but it would be great if you wanted partnership with them.
That's good to know, I didn't, yeah. We've, we've been in Catati for two years, so we're kind of new to...
Yeah, and so, like I said, my kids have, now, I have a senior, so they've been out of Thomas Page for a while, but in the past, that's what they used to do, so.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, we're really, you know, love being in the community, you know, we're, I feel like we're a big part of Petaluma community, but our house, we could throw a rock at our house from here, we live on Valparaiso, so we, you know, we're here, and we love it here. We could walk to our store and, you know, work hard and, you know, maybe even incorporate some of the farmer's market or something too, like free kids' exchange, I was thinking too, something along those lines, so.
And the nursery school's a nonprofit right around the corner too, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, we have brought stuff to them already.
Awesome.
It's a great place.
Before we continue public comment, I just realized, my 500-foot border goes through this building, so I'm handing the gavel to Vice Chair O'Nines and leaving the room for the remainder of this discussion. Somebody get me when it's over.
So, are there any other questions?
Just, it sounds, sounds great. What do you think your age group is that you're going to be having of people you're hoping will come through?
Our age group, at least in Petaluma, is we try and literally have something for everyone, and you know, I, I know Plato's Closet's awesome too, but sometimes they'll have like really tiny clothes, you go in there and you're like, you know, and this is like for, like every individual, so it's not like just geared towards one age group. It's from little kids, you know, all the way up to however age you are, so, kind of where we're at. We have all different kinds of music, from, you know, new, you know, newer music, records to, you know, old, old music. Player piano rolls we have in our, our old store, so.
Yeah, there's, there's not as, we think the college town aspect will help, but we, at our other store, it's really just people of all walks of life, all ages. We, we really, we don't try to cater to one, one customer. We, we want anyone to be able to come in and enjoy it, and we think the downtown of Catati offers a lot of opportunity for that, with the good restaurants and stuff, you need to throw something like that in the mix.
And it would be fun to have retail there, you know, just to be able to walk and be like, okay, I'm going to go and, you know, go to a cool little shop, and, so.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Uh-uh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could we invite our Fire Marshal to speak?
I've done so well avoiding public speaking, so. All right, my name's Andy Taylor, I'm the Fire Marshal with Ranch Rodeo Fire District, and there was a question in regarding to why this fire alarms were triggered. It's actually, the building code is what classified as the building occupancy. So a bank, doctor's office, dentist, more of the professional side is what the, is classified as a B occupancy. Retail and mercantile becomes an M occupancy, which triggers the change in occupancy, which, according if we were going directly by the fire code, would be sprinkled, that building needs to be sprinkled. So fortunately, the fire code gives me a little bit of leeway, and working with the city staff is, we felt a fully functional fire alarm notification would, would be something I could go home and sleep with, so not worry about it so much, so. Any other questions?
So, in other words, you've signed off on this procedure?
The fire one.
Fire-wise?
Yes.
In your purview?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just appreciate the education. That was what it was, was just, you know, sort of, banks seem like it should be covered for, for a fire, and then...
If you kind of look at it, look, if you go into the bank and look at the furnishings and what's in the building, it's really kind of sparse, but a retail store is going to have furniture, you know, clothing, could be plastics, depending on which niche they're going after, so you're increasing the fire load, which, which triggers the change in occupancy.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
I didn't come here to comment about Thrifty Hippie, but I'm Carl Lampert, and I'm on the Design Review Committee. I just came here to listen. I'd like to say, I've, I've known the proprietors for a few years now, and shopped in their store in Petaluma, and I think it's terrific. And it's sort of eclectic, records and things and so forth, but, you know, it's always in good shape, you know, and everything's organized, and they're very helpful to you. So I think it's an excellent business to have here in Catati, so I just want to give my support for their permit. Thank you.
Let's see, let's close this for comment. Now, is there any discussion within the commission? If there's no discussion...
I think it's a good idea, I think there's a good mixture of usages, and I absolutely see that aspect of people after lunch, or maybe even before lunch, having a wander down the street. It adds to the flavor of a, of a mixed, mixed use on the street, so, so besides having a basic entitlement to do it, I think it's a great, great addition.
Yeah, I'm excited to have a new business in town. I appreciate the shop in Petaluma. I tried to go there today, but they close Mondays, so I needed some vinyl, so I'll have to go back later this week, but it'll be even more convenient for me in Catati, so I appreciate that. And, yeah, I think it's wonderful.
I was just going to say, I can really appreciate this too, since I have two daughters that shop quite a bit, and I'm an old record buff, so I still have my turntable, actually, and my brother just actually has a jukebox, so we're, yeah, I'm thrilled. This is going to be...
Well, like, it's the place for you guys.
This is like the place for us, yeah.
Well, I think, especially the Fire Marshal's endorsement counts quite a bit. Are we open for a resolution?
Sure, I can, you want me to do it? Are you, you're saying?
You're the grown-up. Go ahead.
Okay, sure. Let's see. We're to approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Catati, approving a conditional use permit to allow a second-hand store at 8220 Old Redwood Highway. Thrifty Hippie, is it Top Sand as well? All right. And I'll second.
Do you take that to a vote?
Chair Ford is out there. Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Welcome.
Sorry, I'm running.
Have we any reports by staff?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair O'Nines, I have a few things to report to you. The, one of the last remaining pieces of the Old Redwood Highway South project, as we call it, the downtown section of the roadway, will be the crosswalks, the installation of the crosswalks, the actual materials that we're using in the crosswalks. They like to let the roadways, I'll call it cure for a little bit before they put that in, so it doesn't get marred, so probably be a month, few weeks to a month out, but then that'll be the final piece of that project. Similarly with the north...
Are these the ones that speak to you? The cross, like the...
Oh, no, I'm talking about the pavement treatment, actually. There will be one lit crosswalk at Page, and I honestly don't know if it speaks to you or not. It is signalized, activated. So similarly with the lit crosswalk in the Northern Gateway Project, the more northern section of Old Redwood Highway, those crosswalks will be coming soon as well. The streetlights in the Northern Gateway section, those are going to be, if you notice, there are a few installed already in the Northern Plaza, so those will be coming in, if not this week, then done next week. And you all may be seeing a follow-on action on the wall, you and the Design Review Committee, to see if, if there's an appetite for putting the border on the off sides of the wall where the mural is not. So just as it's going in, it's looking a little plain on the off sides, and if you recall, the border is only on the side where the mural is. So the designer right now is developing a recommendation to see what he thinks, so that may be coming back to both bodies shortly. We will also be figuring out exactly what we want to, what actions we need to do with the joint meeting that you all had as the BPAC with Runert Park. There are a couple of items in there that may be action items, so we're, you may see that come back as well. There are definitely some follow-up items for staff, but there may also be some official actions from, from you all, so that, there may be some follow-up on that. And JP's been working on the Wayfinding Program that the council added to our work program for the year, so that's good. We're trying to get the essential pieces and scope together so that we can apply for a grant in the springtime, so hopefully we'll be successful through all pieces of that. And finally, on projects, on private development projects, you probably saw that the Design Review Committee in their most recent meeting evaluated the Santerana Way project, and that is on track to come to you on October 3rd, so barring any, any, anything that's unforeseen, that, that'll be, notices will be going out on that this week, and you'll be seeing it on the 3rd. And shortly after will be Valparaiso. Those two projects were, you know, scuttling around for so long, and then all of a sudden they came together, and they're on the flight path, so they're going really quickly at this point, so I expect Valparaiso will follow really shortly behind Santerana Way, so appreciate you guys all being diligent and being available for the meetings, because that's really going to be necessary as we head into the fall. So I think that's it for us. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
So I just had a question, as I'm driving down on Old Red, the cones that are by the trees, what is that?
Some of those are there in the places where the light posts, the streetlights are going to go, yeah.
And then, one other question I had was, the landscaping for the Walgreens, are we responsible for that? Are they going to be putting that back in, or all the, the stuff that was torn out?
Kind of two things going on with the Walgreens store. One, the portions that were torn out, yes, the city will be putting that back. There's also the condition of the rest of landscaping. They have obviously not been watering it, so it's looking a little ragged right now, and I think they, it was understandable that they may not have known really what to expect from the road project, but we may end up having to send them a letter. So what's, what's fully disturbed will be replaced, the, the rest of it will hopefully get a refresh soon.
I just had one more.
Go ahead.
On the lawn port... On the lawn portion of that, is it at all possible just to do native plants instead of replacing that lawn? Is that something that could be recommended?
We have recommended that, and I think they were interested mostly in just mulching it and leaving it with very little plant cover beyond the trees, and we responded that that wasn't compliant with the land use code, so that's when it started to die.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Vicki, you mentioned that the south side had to cure for the walkways. Why doesn't the north have to cure? You said we've been delaying on the south side?
Yeah, not delayed. It was work, it was in the schedule to begin with. I was more trying to explain why it's sort of coming in leaps and bounds. The Northern Gateway portion, it's a good question for our city engineer, whether it has to cure for the same period, but the Northern Gateway piece hasn't had a full asphalt cover redo like the southern portion has, so I don't know that it would have the same cure time. It just so happened that I think they'll both sort of collide in the same time schedule. I don't think it was necessarily planned that way. The Northern Gateway section, the southern section got a full dig out all the way to the base and repaved, and the northern section wasn't that old and wasn't as old and wasn't in as poor condition, so it's getting more like a resurface.
The south has to settle, is that what you're...
Settle, and the oils need to circulate and come up out of the asphalctic material so that it doesn't cause the pavement coloring to just get worn out, worn over.
Okay.
More like, I guess really, you see the areas where the asphalt gets carried off Old Redwood Highway and onto the other streets surrounding, you've probably all seen that. So if it doesn't cure, it wouldn't, those marks would be all over the colored portion, so we're just trying to get that oil out of it before we put the color down.
Any more?
Yeah. So this is actually a little bit of a follow-on from the BPAC meeting. At last meeting, we were talking about the pedestrian lights that are on Conus Boulevard along the Laguna, and I'd also been talking to some other people since then in discussing the sort of the meeting, and the commentary a little bit was, was that those lights don't seem to be working. Well, going up to them, I realize I've been overcompensating. There is nothing for the pedestrians and the bicyclists coming up to indicate that the lights are actually working, and a couple of other people pointed this out to me. So when you go out and you press the button on there, I mean, I've been kinda looking around the edge and seeing that the lights were flashing, but when you're standing in front of those, it's just, I think, a little point to take in the design that it needs some feedback for the, you know, pedestrians that are there, because there is no feedback. I don't know if you would, I know...
Yeah, because in Saneros, or different ones, they do say, "Light is flashing."
The crosswalk actually has been activated.
Yes, has been activated, and so since I am all in Sonoma County now, walking across the streets for my job, I appreciate those, because it definitely does make me aware that even though I'm still cautious and everything, walking out, that it's for me to know that it's flashing now, and I can go, especially in Montgomery Village, which is very dangerous in there, and they have those all the way around Montgomery Village that say, you know, "Flashing light, activated." Pedestrian can go, yeah.
So to clarify, that the light that the motorist sees is shrouded or in such a position that the pedestrian or bicyclist cannot see it?
Correct.
And so, and there's no vocal, there's no auditory signal? Okay.
This is a bike path crossing of Conus?
Conus, right there, yeah.
Right.
So you always see that the even tip light's not working?
There's no feedback, yeah, to say it's actually going and stuff. And a sort of a second, it's kind of just a query or a question really, within the bicycle and pedestrian plan, I guess is what we called it, what is the requirement within it to bring anything that's going on in the public domain to the committee? I know there was something in there, so there is a, so we had all the Old Redwood Highway brought to the planning commission, but I know there was also something in that, and there's been a lot of other work in the town. And so I'm just wondering, where is that cut as to what comes before the committee versus not, because we are acting in the bicycle and pedestrian mode on that?
Yeah, sort of big picture, the way it works is that you all advise the city council on the general plan, policies and actions, and the bicycle and pedestrian master plan is a secondary document or an implementing document to that, but it's embedded in the general plan through policy. So similarly to the Bike and Ped Master Plan Engineering's Capital Improvement Program should all be following out of those action items and policies as well. So the Engineering and Public Works Department Capital Improvement Program is also an implementing document, just like the Bike and Ped Master Plan. So given that that's the hierarchy of it and the structure of it, the two should always be consistent, so the capital improvement program should be informed by the goals and policies and actions of the general plan. So it could be implemented in a number of ways. The city could develop, other jurisdictions do this on an annual or a biannual procedure where the capital improvement program identifies the priority of projects, and those come to you, come to the planning commission, and then you all make the finding of consistency with the general plan, and then it goes on to the council for funding approval, whether those are grants, or general fund, or street fund, or whatever the funding sources are. It just so happens with ours that the projects that are being implemented now started such a long time ago, that they had various points of process insertion, or better way to say it, is you all were, and the design review committee were inserted in these processes that probably didn't really, from an outsider's perspective, seem to make a lot of sense. But the big picture, it, we were trying to treat it as if it was a capital improvement program and following the general process for you all. The reason it probably didn't seem as structured as it should have been is that the, they were funded by grants with little to no general fund infusion in them, so we didn't have a whole lot of flexibility of the scope of the project. So a lot of times, the transitional areas of those plans were not as tied in to other improvements as we might have liked. That was sort of a really long-winded way of saying they should, they should all take direction, all of these should take direction from the general plan that you all spent so much time on, including the Bike and Ped Plan, and then there, the Bike and Ped Plan, the CIP and the zoning code are various stages of implementing what you decided to do with the general plan. So, and then as a follow-on or companion to that, future public works projects, as funds come available, should be drawing from that Bike and Ped Plan for their projects as well as street projects. Should be looking at the prioritization in there and the prioritization within the overall general plan to see how they wanna spend monies that are available.
Good, thank you.
I wanted to add two things. One, piling on a couple of our applicants today, I wanted to say, by contrast with some other experiences recently, I've been made aware that I'm very appreciative of the brevity and clarity of our planning commission staff reports, so thank you for those. And secondly, on the issue that you were just talking about, I was disappointed that the south Redwood paving and striping plan didn't come before us as the Bike and Ped Advisory Committee. I think that, as it turned out, I'm very happy with what we ended up with, but those projects had significant impact on especially bicycle routing through downtown, and had the sheroes been missing or something like that, I would have been pretty upset. And I understand the theory that public projects take direction from the general guiding documents that we do have input on, but we had some significant input to the Northern Gateway project that I thought was helpful, and to bypass the planning commission in its Bike and Ped Advisory Committee role, especially in that project, seemed problematic to me, and I request that you pass that on to the engineer and city manager.
Yes, I definitely will pass that on, and I know our city engineer shares the goal of having either an annual or biannual CIP so that everything is in there, and it all comes, so that it's just easier that way for you all to look at the priorities, and then the separate design pieces can be filed into that, so I will definitely pass that on.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any reports by commissioners? Vice Chair O'Nines?
Ms. Parker, I'm concerned looking at the condition of the fairly recently installed light posts downtown. Some of them, I don't, to me, I thought they were baked in ammo or something, but they seem to be weathering rather quickly and prematurely. I would ask perhaps if your group would take a look at them, see if there's some sort of a warranty, or if you concur with my finding that they just seem to be wearing faster than they should. They're what, four years old, three?
Excuse me, could you clarify the two-block section of single lane? Is that, are those light standards?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And also, some of the friendly lighting, I think it was referred to, is not so friendly anymore. Some of it's falling down and it looks haphazard. It needs some...
You mean the ones that people think are Christmas lights or something?
Whatever.
The Steve Nomsen lights?
Is that right?
I think those need to be repaired as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other reports by commissioners? Okay, then I think we are adjourned.
Thank you.